October 11th, 2018, Planning Commission meeting for Haverford Township. Our chairman, Joe Russo, is not here tonight, so I'll be running the meeting this evening. My name is Angelo Capuzzi and I'm vice chairman of the Planning Commission. Can we take a roll, please? Here. Okay, we only have one item on our agenda this evening. It's final land development plans for the BMMSBA Railroad LLC development at 986 and 996 Railroad Avenue. And do we have someone from the applicant here tonight?
Yes, you do. Kristen Pianzio from Hamburg Rubin Mullen Maxwell and Loop and representing the applicant.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So normally, the way we go through these meetings is we start out with the Township Engineers Review Letter. I'm assuming that your engineer has had a chance to review the letter and he's in a position to go through the comments with us?
Yes, we've been through the letter and in fact, there's been conversations today between our engineer's office and the Township Engineers' office. And we've come to an agreement on how to handle a number of items in that letter. There's only a couple that we really need to talk about. If you're inclined to go through every comment, we could do that, but it's really a will comply, but for a few.
That's fine. There may be some items that you may not think are important to cover that we'll ask questions about, but why don't we do it that way for now?
Great, Mr. Chairman. So the letter that we have is dated October 9th, 2018. And before I get started, I want to be sure to give to Kelly the certificate of mailing, giving notice to the neighbors. So this is the first time we've been here since you've been live on camera, so I'll try to coordinate my voice with the plan. And Bob will be here, too, and we'll try to do this seamlessly. So as the board knows, we were here in June for recommendation for preliminary plan approval. Prior to that, we were in front of the zoning hearing board. Prior to that, we were here in front of you with a sketch. Comments from the residents have all been incorporated into the design of this plan. Comments from the Planning Commission have also been incorporated. We do have preliminary plan approval from the elected body. And the waivers that we requested from the last time we were here were incorporated in that approval, so we don't foresee any new ones. But for the couple of things that I want to talk about, so the second page of Chuck's review letter, even though Dave has authored it, they're all will complies and/or waivers that have already been granted. Page three, also same thing. I can tell you that we are scheduled in front of the Shade Tree Commission on October 22nd. That submission has been made and that review will be had. But the rest of that page is all will complies. Really, there's just some detail and some notes that they're looking for. Page four, again, all will complies. Our submission is into PennDOT. There have been conversations with PennDOT before the formal submission went in, but it is in and we're waiting for review comments. Obviously, the township was copied on that submission and will be kept abreast on the process of that application. So that brings me to the last page, page five. Number 22 talks about the pedestrian easement for the proposed sidewalk on Railroad Avenue. And Haverford Road appear to encroach into the 10-foot landscape buffer. So in order to address the Railroad Avenue portion of the property, we can bring, as you know, we have more parking on this plan than when we are required under your code. And that is our effort to address what these doctors know are their needs and the needs of the neighbors to not have our patients parking in the neighborhood. So we wanted to be sure that we had plenty of parking and we can pull three spaces and make them into compact car spaces to get them out of that easement area as opposed to eliminating them. That's what we would like to do. There is now a surge of those little cars that people are driving around as opposed to the big oversized SUVs. So that would impact three car spaces, is that right?
Yes, and we would sign it.
Come here.
We would sign those three compact spaces as compact cars only.
Do you still have the 65 spaces that you presented in June?
I'm sorry?
65.
Do you still have 65?
Yes.
The next comment is 20, number 23, talks about the grass strip between the sidewalk and the curb along Haverford. We took a look up and down Haverford. Most of the curb is right against the sidewalk. We understand that having a separation is preferred over that. The problem is, and Bob can elaborate, is the stormwater management is in that front yard area. We can pull it back a little bit, but without impacting that area too much, we could provide a two-foot grass strip between the sidewalk and the curb. The four-foot is a bit too intrusive to our design.
The four-foot grass strip is a design standard.
I see a code section there, yes, so I would assume we would need a partial waiver.
And the reason that's important is, up on Eagle Road, we have a situation where the sidewalk is against the curb, and it's really a not ideal situation for pedestrian traffic. And especially along Haverford Road where you have high volumes of traffic. And actually, this is the first property within that area that would have sidewalk. None of the other properties to the south of this property have sidewalks. So at least myself personally feel it's important to have that full separation between the curb and sidewalk there. Not only does it provide safety for pedestrians, but it also sets a precedent for developments down the line to the south of this property.
I understand. If we could put the four-foot in, it would be preferred for us as well. We're also concerned with pedestrian safety. We're providing sidewalks along our frontage and along railroad in order to promote that. Our only issue is that the stormwater management basin is designed in that area and we encroach it. We do have our MPDES permit in hand that would greatly impact that. We would have to go back and revise that permit. And we think that two feet would be a compromise that we could live with and hopefully would provide that space that you're looking for for safety.
Would the Planning Commission, if I can interject, would the Planning Commission like a wider sidewalk instead of a four-foot wide sidewalk? Take that two-foot verge and make it a six-foot wide sidewalk?
The sidewalk on Haverford Road is already indicated to be six feet wide.
Well, I'm saying to make it even wider.
Well, if you can make it wider, I mean, the whole purpose of asking for a waiver, you have to have a legitimate reason for asking for a waiver, okay? The fact that it impacts your development, in my opinion, is not a significant reason, okay? If you had followed the ordinance from day one, you would have realized that that grass strip was required and you would have designed your project accordingly. Now you're telling me that impacts on features that are already designed. You talk about the stormwater management system impacting the stormwater management system. Township engineer has comments about the stormwater management system. One of its concerns is that maybe more effort is required as far as where those systems are to be built. You've taken the time to do infiltration tests and basically, your infiltration tests all read zero. And I think the Township engineer suggested there might be other opportunities on the property where additional infiltration testing might lead to areas that have better infiltration and we could achieve the goal of the stormwater ordinance as far as infiltration goes.
And my staff had spoke to Chuck today, and you know, I believe Chuck, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, you know, we're going to, and we'll send you a plan. We'll test in this area here and along this frontage in here. Is that what you were talking about?
Yeah, that's where I talked to Brian about testing.
Right, right.
So if those areas test better than the previous areas, you're going to have to revise your plan anyhow?
Well, I think, with all due respect, and I understand exactly what you're saying, we get in these situations which, when it comes to design, with the chicken and egg, which comes first and what there's left to utilize. And that comes up a lot in the engineering as we fix where the building is supposed to be as opposed to where it is. If it's two foot back, that affects zoning. And so setting the buildings was always first, designing around it. We knew that we needed stormwater management in the front. What I'm hearing from the engineers is that if there is stormwater management to be enhanced in the back of the building, that won't make up for the basin that we have in front of the building. I would like that result to be the opposite so that we could use the room where we have it in the back and not in the front. As far as the waiver is concerned, intent of waivers is that, is there a reason to, is there a way to meet the goal of the code section that's not exactly as written? And that's why the MPC allows you to grant waivers and the commissioners to grant waivers so that the intent is met and modifications can be made in a reasonable fashion. So I think the intent of that four-foot strip is the safety that you brought up, exactly that. And I think we can achieve that with two feet as opposed to four.
And if you read the MPC and the Township ordinance, these waivers are supposed to be submitted with a written explanation as to why they're required and why the ordinance is onerous to some degree. And I don't think it's fair to walk in here the night of final approval and say, "We need more waivers."
Well, in all fairness, we got the letter two days ago and we just, oh, we got it, yes.
That's not the point. The point is, you're supposed to look at the ordinance and find out what the criteria is and what the design requirements are before you design your plan. You're not, it's not up to us to tell you how to design it. It's up to us to enforce the regulations of the township, and that's all we're doing here.
I don't mean to be argumentative, but we do rely on the reviews in order to generate what waivers that we require. We were able to identify for them at the preliminary stage. This came up in a final design comment, so with all due respect, if I could have had it written before we got here tonight and submitted it to you like we did at the preliminary stage, we would have done that, sir.
Is there anything else before I ask the board members if they have any other questions?
Item 24, I don't see a code section relative to that, so I don't believe I need a waiver there. We're looking at some sort of pedestrian access route from the handicap parking. We understand the comment. I don't know how we can exactly address it other than some painting crosswalks across that parking lot area, but the handicap spaces, as you know, are always right by the door. So I'm not sure that such a path, a designated path, is necessary.
Okay.
We can look at doing some striping there.
Were you here for the, I don't remember if you were here for the sketch plan presentation?
I don't think I was for the sketch plan.
Okay. Well, one of the things we commented on was the fact that some of those parking spaces were over 400 feet away from the main entrance to the building. And we specifically requested that sidewalks be added so that people parking in the parking lot didn't have to walk all the way through the driveways and the parking areas to get to the building. Now, you indicated when you first started your presentation that you took our comments into account when you designed the plan. And obviously, there's one situation there where you didn't at all. And I think all Chuck's asking for is a designated crosswalk from the handicap spaces to the main entrance, which is not uncommon as far as any parking lots that I've seen recently.
When we say take your comments into consideration, I mean that entirely, and that's what we've done. We have a very oddly shaped property here. And we plan on the staff parking in the furthest locations so that the patients have the convenience of those closer spaces. We can certainly work with Chuck to come up with some designated area for those handicap spaces. We can do a painted crosswalk or something of that sort. You do have to get across the parking lot in order to get to the door. We'll work with him and come up with something that makes him happy.
The other thing is that it's proposed, and we talked about this from the very beginning.
Can you get closer to the mic?
Okay. I'm sorry. It was proposed, and we discussed this at the beginning of the project, that the employee parking would be the furthest removed from the front door and the ones closer to the front door would be for our patients.
So those areas have signs, one of them showing, saying, employees, those spaces are signed with employee parking, aren't they?
No, they are not proposed to be signed, but the staff gets there before the patients and the doctors will insist that the staff use those spaces.
Okay. I still think it's not in the best interest of your clients, of your patients, to have to walk through the parking lot. Even if that lower area is reserved for your employees, I mean, they can get hit with a vehicle just easily as a patient can. And again, back at the sketch plan phase, we talked about, the ordinance requires that a sketch plan be presented with the preliminary plans that show what the development would look like if the open space was provided. And we brought that up at the sketch plan phase, and we were told, "We'll do that at preliminary plan phase." And that wasn't done. That's another item that we brought up at the sketch plan phase that you folks didn't follow through on. And then the final thing was the entrance driveway itself, its intersection with the main parking lot. Ideally, it should be 90 degrees, and it's like 120 degrees, which means that most of your patients coming in are going to have to make that 120-degree turn in order to get into the main parking area. So I only point those out because, again, you came here with a sketch plan. We gave you those three comments specifically, and it looks like, it seems like they were not accounted for in your design.
In all fairness, like I said, we took all of your comments and incorporated those that we could. The intersection of Railroad Avenue, that was designed with the help of our traffic engineer. We did listen very closely to the request that we add another driveway in on Haverford, and that completely changed the design of our site. We also listened to the comment about retaining that wall along Railroad Avenue. That also had great impacts on our site. So those are really big-ticket items. We had to go to PennDOT and file a PennDOT application where we didn't need one on Haverford. So that cost a lot of money in design and permitting, which we hope that you would see that we did listen to the major concerns. We heard the others. There's some that we can work on and do for you and some that just don't work.
Is there anything else?
I think one thing I'd just like to clarify. Chuck had pointed out that on page number three, permanent survey markers are required at right-of-way lines, at corners, and at angle points. In some particular instance, this is, in some instances, the proper corner falls on the top of the wall. So, you know, from a practical standpoint, we can't put a concrete monument there and we can't offset it because monuments normally depict the corner. So we would put like a PK nail there or a drill or whatever meets with Chuck's approval. Same thing along the frontage in here, it's in the middle of a sidewalk. So we will put the concrete monuments, you know, where they're missing. We'll hold the iron pins that were found and held because that's in evidence in survey. Old deeds will refer to iron pins.
Whatever Township engineer feels is appropriate in those cases, we're fine with.
That's fine, thank you. Number 19.
Number 19?
Yeah. It's been resolved.
Yes, we had an email from the fire marshal reviewing the truck turning radius in the property. We actually utilized a larger truck than what they have. We used a 48-foot truck. They have a 41, but the 48 worked, and so he was satisfied and wrote that email to us.
You're right with that, Chuck.
Yeah. We typically defer to the fire people anyway. Comments or questions?
I know a lot of effort went into laying the plan out, but I still have some reservations about the handicap parking. I don't like the idea that you have to name the railroad area. And I know the effort is difficult, it's slightly difficult, but if you ever watch a handicap person get out of a car and go through a front of a building, I think you'd understand that.
Sure, sure. We have the drop-off area in the front, so that competes with the ability to put the handicap spaces against the front as well. I understand your comment and hopefully we'll have good carrying assistance for anybody who uses that handicap space. But the drop-off area is along the front there, and that prevents us from utilizing that area.
And the drop-off area would be used to drop off handicapped individuals if, in fact, that would be the better way for them to go as opposed to parking, you know, in the handicap parking spaces. That's why we came up with that configuration.
What are your plans along Railroad Avenue?
What are our plans on Railroad Avenue?
Yeah.
The plans are that, and this was one of Chuck's comments, and we didn't have an opportunity to speak with him today about it, but along Railroad Avenue, we're continuing the sidewalk all the way along Railroad Avenue. And Chuck had mentioned about, there used to be three entrances along here, one, two, and three. This one, we kept because, you know, that's a known entity. We wanted to keep it far enough away from the residential areas. But I think Chuck and, and I didn't get a chance to call you, but, you know, we're closing off that, we're closing off both the entrances. Was your concern about the apron there, whether that should be removed? Is that what that was?
Yes.
Okay.
Exactly. It's indicated visually or graphically still being there.
Right. Okay, then we'll put a note on the plan that gets removed.
The sidewalk's going all the way down.
Yes.
Yes, and crossing county line with handicap ramps on either side.
Okay. And that's in this area here, in the upper, almost center of the page. We also have a follow-up meeting with the Shade Tree Commission on Monday. We submitted a study to them. We've made all the changes on the plans that were called for at our first meeting with the Shade Tree Commission, so we will be back to see them this Monday evening. Kelly, did the Shade Tree Commission get a copy of the plans?
They did. They were given to Joe Celia, who is the liaison for that group.
Okay, great, thank you.
Jesse?
Yeah, could you describe any kind of signage along Haverford Road that would direct people in to the entrance? And I do, actually, I remember coming to the sketch meeting before I was on the commission just to see how things went. And I remember the neighbors being very concerned about traffic coming along railroad. So I do appreciate that you guys went the extra mile to get the Haverford Road entrance, and I think that's going to really help. But if you could walk me through people arriving and any kind of signage or...
It's going to be signage on the building, but the address won't be, but that's going to be like a Hallmark sign. We don't have any monument signs in these areas at all because your signage is somewhat limited to what we can have. There's nothing along that area that specifically says, "Welcome to BMMS." And again, the medical office building will be a destination, so people will know they can either come in off of railroad or, I think probably 90% of your traffic's going to be coming off of Haverford. And it's an ingress and egress spot, so those people won't, historically, wouldn't be using Railroad Avenue.
You said there's going to be signage on the building face itself with the address, the number?
Yes, we've discussed with staff that the number is actually more important because that's what people are looking for.
Right, and I think that's consistent with other buildings, other similar buildings on Haverford Road, right?
Yeah, we think that's better. The signage that we're permitted is very limited, so the number, I think, would be like the most important part.
I live in that basic community. That's my part of the township. And I have watched the development of Haverford Road and how it has changed since I was a boy. My family's been there for 68, almost 69 years at this point in time, down the road a few blocks. My concern is that, and I had asked the last time, and I don't know exactly, have you got any idea of what the building is going to look like? And I have had comments from our commissioner, Mr. Lewis, who has asked me, "What is the building going to look like? Is it going to just be another stucco box? And is there going to be some kind of character to the building so that it adds something to the community?" And I said I would specifically ask. So with the corner here going up in this direction, are you looking at, since you're going to have an entrance in from, coming in from the other side, are you thinking of...
We, at the last, yeah, at the last Planning Commission meeting, we showed you this, which is our first step at designing the building. The architects are here. We brought them with us in case you did have this question, trying to be responsive to your comment last time. They are still working out the interior of the building. The doctors are figuring out how the layout will work, what equipment they're going to have. And once that is set, then they can work on the design on the outside. So I know that it's fluid at this point, but they're here to answer questions if you have any. It's generally the look that we're going for to answer your question, Mr. Riordan.
This is Haverford running from right to left. This is county line running down to the foreground.
Absolutely.
This is the stone wall that we've preserved. This is the, as best as we could superimpose it on here, this is the rental building next door. It's not an addition on ours.
Understood.
Okay.
And I'm looking here at the corner here and seeing some sort of a monument sign. Am I correct?
Well, that's, this is an older version, so, I mean, it costs a significant amount of money just to change the color of the brick on this.
But yeah, that's just illustrative. We'll comply with the zoning ordinance, whatever, we're permitted to put there.
Okay. All ready? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Riordan.
And I wanted to ask, and I appreciate the fact that there was this wonderful, wonderful desire to keep this wall. And I have, it's a nice wall. I just wish that that wall didn't have to stay there. Because I believe that a sidewalk along County Line Road was a heck of a lot more important than a wall that has no need. And that is my opinion, and I believe that that is the purview of the design standards and should not have been a requirement by the zoning commission to make those kinds of planning decisions for you or for the Planning Commission or otherwise. Our need to have a Planning Commission is rather, it just is not as necessary. And I am really sorry to say that, and you all are in the middle here, but I know that the wall was important, but I just watched some lady yesterday, as I was coming down Haverford Road, jump up against the wall as somebody came blowing by her on County Line Road. That's a dangerous section along that side, and we're not able to address it. And I feel like for the community, it leaves an awful lot to be desired. And I worry so much about, that road is a 35 mile an hour road. There are all kinds of stripes on it in different places because the police do enforce all kinds of, because people are doing 45 and 50 miles an hour. And so what worries me is keeping the sidewalk close to the road, in my opinion, is dangerous because of all the trucks with their great big wide, I think, I think having that four-foot set off is... set off is really important. I don't know how to work it out with your plan, but I believe that that's a safety issue as well. So, those are my comments, and I thank you very much for coming back.
Thank you, Mr. Reardon. I remember you feeling very strongly about the sidewalk versus the wall on county line. We appreciate that.
How far is the wall from the building?
About 35 feet at its furthest point.
Is it possible for it's a wall from Railroad Avenue to Haverford, behind the wall?
Okay, this is the wall, as I'm calling it out with the pointer.
Right.
Then it gets away from county line in Haverford. But at its furthest point, it's 35 feet from our building to the wall, and over here, it's probably...
Is it possible for a walk inside the wall from Railroad Avenue to County Line, or to Haverford Avenue?
I do remember that question coming up last time we were here at preliminary, and we have grave concerns about putting people on a sidewalk behind that wall. It's a liability issue for my clients. We think it's a safety issue for the residents. So, we did consider it, but then we decided that it's not in the best interest of the project or the residents.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a few more questions. What testimony was presented to the zoning board that motivated them to include a condition that the wall not be demolished?
Well, that was some time ago. I know that Ms. Elliott was present and asked for party status, and she gave a lot of testimony about things about the property, but there were others too. Someone from the historic commission was there as well, and a few other individuals that all seemed to be of the same mind that testified in front of the board about the glass in the wall, the beautiful architecture that's in the wall itself, and they wanted that to be saved.
Okay, so it was mostly in response to citizens' comments?
It could be. I don't know what was going through the board's mind when they attached that condition, but I did hear that testimony.
I'm just wondering what provision of the zoning ordinance they would have been concerned about that they would have put a condition like that into the final approval, considering the fact that the majority of the wall was in the state, legal state right-of-way. I mean, if PennDOT were ever wanted to come around and widen that street, would they have to go to the township zoning board to get approval?
Yeah, it's right along, right along there. It's very close.
The plan shows that the wall's pretty much inside the right-of-way.
And I understand, I represent five zoning hearing boards, and I always caution them not to step on other people's toes in rendering decisions and conditions, but as an applicant, as you can understand, we're at the mercy of those sorts of things, so...
Okay.
Again, that's another example of comments that we got from the planning commission, wall versus sidewalk, you know, a lot of things that we had to take into consideration when coming up with this design.
Yeah, I have two zoning issues. Number one is the building height, and the plans indicate that the building height is 42 feet, which is the exact distance from the finished floor to the top of the roof, I assume.
Yes.
Okay, but the zoning ordinance defines building height as the average grade around the front of the building to the highest point on the roof.
And our front of the building is on the interior of the property.
Well, not according to your pictures.
Front of the building is not defined as anything relative to the street entrances. The entrance is on the other side, sir, from the parking lot.
Okay. Okay, so that's the front of your building?
Correct.
Okay, so regardless of where you put signs or anything like that, that has no bearing?
Correct.
Okay. And also, the 10-foot wide buffer, the zoning ordinance requires that the buffer be planted to its full width. So, where you're showing the buffer starting at the right-of-way line, it is incorporating two or three feet of sidewalk area. So your buffer needs to be moved back so that the sidewalk is not in the buffer.
Correct, we're able to do that.
That's why we talked about the compact cars.
Well, that's another thing. There's no provision in our code to allow a parking space less than nine by 18.
Well, we'll have to work it out. We don't want to lose the spaces.
Who are you gonna work it out with? You can't work it out with the planning commissioner or the commissioners. They don't have the right to approve something that doesn't meet the zoning code.
You're telling, there's a zoning provision regarding the size of the...
I believe so.
But if they're exceeding the required spaces, does it, do they all...
If they're exceeding the required spaces, then they don't need those spaces.
And then, what we're trying to do is provide enough spaces so that people don't park in the neighborhoods, which was...
I understand that, I understand that, but we can't go making rules for you that we can't, we have to apply to other people, too.
I understand.
You indicated that you're providing a fee in lieu of open space. How much is that fee?
Actually, I've written a legal letter to the solicitor regarding whether or not we've been subject to that open space fee. If we are, we'll pay, whatever the required amount is. However, there's an argument that that code reads in our favor and that no fee is required. He's gonna review it prior to final. That was our conversation, so I'll have that resolved with the solicitor.
I'd be interested to know what your argument is on that.
I don't have my legal argument with me, but I think I can take it up with the solicitor, and he can advise the elected body as to his opinion.
Fine. Is there anyone in the audience that is here that would like to speak about this project? Yes, ma'am, please come up, state your name and address.
My name is Euphemia Brower, 123 County Line Road in Bryn Mawr. I live on this street. Have you ever tried to come out of your house at 4:00 in the afternoon? It's practically impossible to make a left turn from my house property onto County Line Road because of the backup at the traffic light. So I would like to ask the board to insist that a no-left turn be placed at the exits on Railroad Avenue. We cannot handle any more traffic onto County Line Road. And you're talking about 65 parking spaces. At least 20, 25% of those will be for employees coming out of there, and they'll want access to go up or down County Line Road. We can't handle it. There's no left turn and no space for one at the corner of Haverford Road and County Line Road. So, I would like you to take that into consideration, please, so that we don't feel penned in anymore in the middle of the day.
Let me just clarify one thing. So you're asking that people who leave the property not be allowed to turn left on Railroad Avenue? That they have to turn right?
Must turn right coming out of that building, out of that...
Doesn't that put them into the residential neighborhoods?
It puts them in somewhat, but you can't make, put any more traffic onto County Line Road. As it is now, traffic is backed up from the middle of the street beyond Railroad Avenue up towards Old Lancaster Road. If you're putting more cars into there at that time of day, it's, does not handle the problem. Everybody gets out, and then you create bigger traffic jams than we have now. It takes sometimes 10 minutes to get from my door down to the traffic light.
Mr. Reardon would also like to address your question.
I'm glad you're here.
I understand what you're talking about. Over the course of years, when I was a boy, Railroad Avenue went all the way up to the corner, and there was an extra light up there for railroad to cut across. They got rid of that and made it one-way for that first block in.
Mm-hmm.
That was a smart move. Inconvenient, but very smart.
Very smart, I love it.
They also have on that, going over to Pennsylvania Avenue, that little road that's just got two houses on it, maybe three, that coming in at that corner at, they control that during the morning hours and from, I believe it is 3:00 or 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. They control that being, only allowing entry from one direction in order to also take care of that situation. What I am hoping will happen when PennDOT does the study is that a better light will be included in that area, and I will explain to you what I'm talking about. When the quarry down on Route 1 came into position, came into place, they put in a different kind of traffic lights in in that corner, and PennDOT demanded that that be done. And in the process, what happens is they have these machines to count and know what's going on. And if we can clean up that area between Bryn Mawr Hospital and County Line Road and Landover, as I guess it's called going on, if we can clean that up so that it better is managed, your problem can very well go away. And that's a condition that we need to take up with PennDOT and specifically ask them to look at that and to get the kinds of counts that they need to have so that they can make the proper decision. Because that one building is not gonna take care of your problem right now, the way it already is.
No, it's going to aggravate it and make it significantly worse.
It very well may exacerbate it, but if we can get PennDOT to get involved in the process as they are now doing, as they have done now down at College Avenue, and putting in a smart light there, and as they're doing in Ardmore Avenue, and we can have them come up and do the same thing in that Haverford Road corridor, we will solve our problem. And it will solve your community's problem tremendously. I don't think that we can have only right-hand turns out from this building. And the problem is, is that on rail, on the outgoing traffic on Haverford Road is only allowed to go one direction. We cannot, in all good conscience, I don't think we can fairly keep them from being able to make turns and, it will be, create another whole big problem, even though I know your prob, what your problem is, and I live it with you, I understand where you're coming from, and I wish we could address it. But I believe it's a PennDOT situation here, and PennDOT needs to respond to this. And I don't, we don't have a legal, we don't have a leg to stand on in that regard. It's my opinion.
Not even from the private property saying, "No left turn." I'm talking about it on this property because you can't, you know, as you explained earlier, because the stone wall stays, there's no space for a left turn. And if one car is trying to turn left from County Line Road and there's oncoming traffic, it doesn't happen. So the counter won't see that there's no traffic going through and will change the light. It does not solve the fact that traffic is stuck halfway up the second block of that street.
It's my understanding, the way the counters work, is they're counting at the actual street, and they know that if there's 60 cars coming through at a time, and they keep on adding and adding, they give them much more time. It's truly remarkable what's happened on Route 1. I mean, it has changed in the mornings and nights, a total disaster in that part of the township, to something that's really quite comfortable and easy to do.
I hope it's that way, then. Thank you.
Sure enough.
Anything you folks would like to say in regards to the comment? Nope? Okay. Anyone else in the audience who would like to make a statement or ask questions?
They're all listening.
Oh, okay. Great. I did miss one thing, going back to comment 19 in the Township Engineers Review Letter.
Yes, sir.
Seems we skipped over the last sentence in that comment.
I can address that part.
And looking at your plans for your turning analysis for your delivery truck, if I'm not mistaken, in order to make a right-hand turn into the site from Haverford Road, the truck has to make it from the left-hand lane.
Okay. The zoning hearing board had the restriction that only a 20-foot wide truck could be utilized for deliveries to the site.
Which was fine with us, because that's all we need.
And there's a program called Auto Turn, which is an engineers program, and Chuck's aware of this. The only one they had was a 31-foot truck. So, we've got to rerun it. We're trying to check with some of our traffic engineers, see if they have one that we can rerun to the smaller truck.
The zoning board indicated that nothing more than a 20-foot long truck could enter the property. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, so you're gonna...
Truck.
I understand that. So you're gonna rerun, hopefully rerun, the analysis to show whether or not that vehicle can make that turn safely?
Yes.
Okay. Similarly, the right turn into the site from Railroad Avenue, the vehicle is shown basically turning into the outbound lane, okay?
Out on your...
So hopefully, your new analysis will show that that's not a problem, although I would suspect you could correct that situation by slightly increasing the radius of that, on that side of the driveway. Okay. I'm sorry, Chuck, do you have anything you want to add?
Yeah, I got one other thing. We, although you said you'd will comply, can we go back to number 12, which is on page three at the bottom?
Is this with the stormwater coverage?
Yes.
Yes, we spoke with the, with the manufacturer's rep at 5:30 tonight, and he needs about 12 inches of cover. So, you know, we've got 1.17. If we need to...
He's on this comment.
Oh.
You took my...
I'm on 12, but go ahead, Bob, because that's one of my questions, too.
I'm sorry. You know, if need be, we would put, you know, like a concrete slab in the areas where it's a little thin.
Okay. Okay. Number 12, though, is the one I was a little concerned about because in speaking with Brian this afternoon, there didn't seem to be any resolution to that.
Yeah, we talked about that, and what we're talking about is either, you know, making the level spread a little bit wider, you know, as far as the width and the length is what it's gonna be. We will work with you to get that resolved.
Okay. I didn't see any easy resolution to that, but maybe you can come up with something.
We'll put a concrete slab over top of it.
Along those lines, number 13. What does will comply mean?
Well, you know, yeah, Chuck wants us a little bit further away from Railroad Avenue, and we do have some room so we can rework. And the rain garden is located in this area here, so we're gonna, you know, stretch it out, move it further back.
We're gonna pull it back.
So that it won't flow into the street?
I'm sorry?
So that it won't flow into the street?
Correct.
I mean, it will, in a 100-year storm, if it gets all overloaded, it'll flow into the street. But we're trying to pull it back to give it more of an area to disperse as opposed to right directly onto the sidewalk.
Bob, are the conditions of the zoning order listed on the plan anywhere? They are. What sheet is that?
First sheet, or second sheet.
Second sheet? I'm more concerned about the conditions of approval, you know, the retaining wall and the 20-foot truck and things like that. I would like the conditions of the zoning approval to be listed on the title plan.
That's fine.
Yeah, that makes sense.
That's what we have.
Mr. Chairman, under, we have variances granted, and the above variances were granted to the following conditions. That's on here.
Good sheet, maybe.
Right above the word waivers.
Right, thank you.
Well, in a way I do, but in a way I don't, so I... One of the things that seems to happen in these places where we have medical office buildings is that every 10 to 12 years, whoever has a medical office building moves on to another one. And I know it's because it's in their best interest to do so as far as being able to write down expenses and do other things and go on. And my concern is that I want to make certain that we are not going to put ourselves in a situation where in 10 to 12 years, we're going to have to try and find some adaptive reuse for this building, just like we did when the building was sold the last time, because the way it was set up the first time. Each and every time we come to these, these, these situations in, in our community, it appears to me that somehow or other, we're missing a boat. And I'm just going to recommend to the Planning Commission that we revisit this zoning ordinance and figure out how to do a better job in the future, to make certain that we're looking at the future when we're working on these zoning ordinances to present new options to the Board of Commissioners in the, in the, in, in the next few months. Thank you.
Okay, so I assume you're looking for a recommendation for final approval?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I don't think the plans are ready for final approval, to be honest with you. I think there are several issues that still need to be vetted out. The compact parking spaces, the issue with the stormwater, as far as the additional infiltration you're going to be doing, the resolution of the fee in lieu of, did I say compact park, oh, the width of the buffers? I think there's enough here, and enough of the comments, that, that it would be prudent for us to just delay this for another meeting, just to give you a chance to, maybe get a chance to address some of these outstanding issues.
We were, we were hoping, obviously, to work with your engineer to address those issues, since the planning elements of this plan are set. We do have preliminary plan approval, so we're really at the engineering nitty-gritty. These doctors are residents of your community and are looking to invest tens of millions of dollars into this project and to beautify this property. We really would love to get moving, Mr. Chairman, if you would consider us working with your engineer, since I do believe the planning issues are resolved.
I can only tell you how I feel. If someone on the board wants to make a motion to approve the plans, they're welcome to do that. I'm just giving you my comments and my thoughts.
And I, too, have a job to do. I would be remiss if not to push.
Is there anyone who would like to make a motion? Okay, it doesn't seem like anyone's willing to do that, so we'll ask you to come back.
Okay, we'll be back.
Thank you.
Since they were sent to the board to look over about a month ago. If everyone's okay with what I sent, I can certainly go grab them while you vote, if you'd like.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the September meeting.
I'll second that.
Who's second?
I second. I second that motion. And I believe Paul said he was going to abstain.
I have to abstain, too, so... All in favor?
Aye.
Three ayes and two abstain.
I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn.
Second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion to adjourn is approved. Thank you.